So we'll call to the order. The City of Callexico Planning Commission meeting, May the 22nd, 2017. We've started at 6:41. So Caesar, take us to the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, excuse me. We didn't do the roll call.
Is Gabby going to be here tonight? Or give me... Okay, we'll do the roll call. Ulises Cárdenas. Caesar Rodriguez.
Here.
Mary Salazar.
Here.
Okay, so we'll start now with the pledge of allegiance and Caesar, please guide us. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have an approval for the agenda?
I make a motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Before we commence with our meeting, I just want to apologize. I haven't run a meeting in quite a while. So if there's a lot of bloopers, a lot of mess ups, you know, please have patience with me. Okay, so now we'll go on to public comments. So Caesar's telling me I've forgotten the approval of our last minute. So do we have an approval for...
I have a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we can go on to public comments. Gary Matilski. Did I pronounce that right? Okay. What's that? Okay. Do we have David Ruly? Go ahead. Yes.
Mr. Chair. Right now, we can have, Mr. Chair, we can have public comments on non-agenda items at this time. And then if people wish to speak after the agenda item, then they can do that at that time.
As an agenda item, okay. Let me clear that. It's for non-agendized items. Does anyone want to speak? Okay, so let me see what we have here because they're not... We have a Francisco Andrade.
Yes, regarding this agenda, sir.
Okay, so then we'll...
It was inappropriate.
Okay. Ben Horton. Okay. Anna Corona. Maritza Urta, that's... Okay.
Mr. Chair, also, is it possible that if anyone wants to be able to provide their three minutes, it would be appreciated, counsel? Sorry. Since the subject matter is one of the first public meetings we're having, the issues to discuss are lengthy and would at least need two other additional briefings.
Okay, so what you're asking, these people will donate their time. Okay, I'm not going to permit it. I think everyone should have their three minutes. Yes. Yes. Okay, Jorge Collo, is this... What item are you... Who's Jorge Collo? What are you going to...
Senior agenda.
Okay. Chris Wong.
Agenda item.
Okay. Okay, we did our approval of the regular planning commission minutes. Okay, so now we'll go into the public hearing. Okay, now we'll start with the public hearing. The cannabis and overlay zone ordinance UA 2017-02. So we'll start with Chris Wong.
Mr. Chair, can we ask you... We have a PowerPoint presentation and perhaps we can invite... When you open up the public hearing, we can invite those that fill out a slip to come up and express their comments and concerns.
Okay, so you want to do your PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Then go into the public.
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine. So we'll start... Excuse me, Mr. Wong, we'll do the PowerPoint and then we'll go on to the public comments. So you want to begin with the... Are you going to...
Okay, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jill Tremblay. I'm with Best, Bestin Krieger. I'm the interim deputy city attorney. I work with Carlos Campos a lot and I'll be covering the planning commission meetings on a more regular basis. And I'm here tonight to give you a staff report on the cannabis item. The report is quite long, the presentation, so I'll try to go through it fairly quickly so we can get on to public comments since that's the most important part here. So this is just an outline of the presentation. I'm going to go over the existing California law, the current Callexico Municipal Code, our proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which is on the agenda for tonight before the planning commission, and then also our proposed cannabis regulatory permit ordinance amendment. And those are amendments to Title V, and they deal more with business licensing and operations of these types of businesses. It's not really under planning commission purview and authority, but we thought it would be important to share this with you and get your comments and also get public comments on these items. And we're going backwards. So the Compassionate Use Act was the first of California law dealing with medical marijuana. That was passed about 20 years ago in 1996. It's in the Health and Safety Code and that deals with medicinal marijuana and allows patients and primary caregivers to possess and cultivate medical marijuana for personal use. Then in 2003, the state moved on to the Medical Marijuana Program, and that essentially is the law that codifies the identification program, the ID cards that are given to the patients that they can get from their doctors. And it just gave another level to the statutory scheme. And then in 2016 is when we've really got more of the meat of the medical cannabis regulations, and that was in the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, also known as MACURSA. So there's a couple... There's about five major aspects of MACURSA. It has... It allows local prohibition or regulation, so cities can... They still have the power to prohibit medical marijuana uses entirely or regulate them. A state license is required. Right now, medical cannabis businesses can operate without a state license, but once they start issuing them, which they say will be in January 2018, then those types of businesses will have to obtain the state license within a certain period of time to keep operating. And like I said, the state license is not enough. There's a dual licensing scheme, so under medical marijuana, the businesses have to have both a state and local license to operate. Under enforcement, the city is able to enforce the medical, the MACURSA law and also their own regulations. And the state law also has penalties for unlicensed activity. They're both criminal and civil penalties. And cities often adopt similar type penalties and also administrative fines. Then the law that was just passed and approved most recently by the voters in November 2016 is the Control, Regulate Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA, or Proposition 64. And so now we know that recreational adult use is legal in California, and those types of businesses can start operating when they obtain a state license, and they also have to operate in conformance with local law. This law also has different regulations regarding personal cultivation and possession, which I'll go over briefly with you later in the presentation, but the city is not regulating this type of use or cultivation at this point. We're only dealing with commercial activities here. So these are the personal cultivation and possession standards. Personal cultivation, six plants per residence. There can be indoor or outdoor cultivation. Cities can say no to outdoor cultivation, but they cannot ban indoor cultivation, but they can reasonably regulate these types of uses. Possession, adult under this law is 21 and over, and you can possess approximately one ounce or four grams of concentrated cannabis. So the city has the authority to regulate and/or ban recreational marijuana businesses, just like medical marijuana. The city can do either regulations or ban or a combination of both. And as far as licensing, like I mentioned, January 2018 is the date that the state says they'll start issuing licenses. We don't know how many they will issue. It could be very few. It might be a lot. I don't know how well they have their act together, but that's the date that they have said. Under ALMA, a state license cannot be issued if it violates local law or a local ordinance. So if the city doesn't have any regulations in regard to recreational marijuana, either a ban or regulations, then someone could get a state permit and start operating within the city. So we want to have something on the books with regard to recreational marijuana. And then the state does have a taxation scheme. They don't allow medical marijuana sales tax because they want to treat it more like a pharmaceutical, and pharmaceuticals aren't taxed at a state level. And they also have a 15% excise tax on recreational marijuana, and I believe there's also a production tax on the plants, flowers, and trimmings or leaves are taxed at different Another piece of the puzzle is the Governor's Budget Trailer Bill. That was released in about April 2017, and it really looks at kind of putting together the recreational and medicinal laws. I'm not sure if this is going to pass. A lot of the lawmakers that worked on MACURSA, the medical law, are very proud of it, and they spent a lot of time working on it. And so then when the recreational law was passed, there... You know, there was a group of people, including the lieutenant governor was involved and other people, other legislators, but it didn't go through the same rigorous process as the medical. And like I said, businesses would not need a local permit before the state will issue a license. So the state can start issuing licenses to... It's kind of on the states. They have to check and make sure that the particular business is operating with... Under the local standards. So there isn't really as strict as a dual processing or a dual licensing scheme as in the medical law. And the state is also putting out some regulations. They came out in late April 2017, early May of this year, and these are the regulations that are in the California Code of Regulations. So they include some more detailed information. They clarify terms. They'll lay out specifically what's required in the different state licenses and what applicants need to provide. It's kind of similar to the way SEQA is organized, where there's the state law and the Public Resources Code, and then the regulations are in the SEQA guidelines, which are in the California Code of Regulations. So that's how this scheme works as well. Essentially, the regulations are more detailed and provide more guidance. So all of those different uses, they've released regulations on those. They're in draft form, and the public comment period is going on right now, and it ends on June 13th. So the current city regulations, all medical marijuana businesses are banned in all zones at this time. That's in the zoning code. That was adopted in January 2016. That was just right after the medical marijuana laws came into effect. The zoning code doesn't say anything about recreational marijuana businesses. There's no ban or regulations, and so that's something that the city will need to take care of before the state starts issuing licenses. If that didn't occur and the state issued a license at the time that it came up for renewal, the city then had regulations in place, then the business would have to come into compliance with those regulations. But we want to get ahead of that and set something in place before that happens. So Title V, there are some business operating provisions in there right now, and as part of the staff report, we put together additional draft regulations, where it's kind of a revision of those regulations, and they include more detail, and they're in part based on some of the regulations that the state has put out. So to go over the zoning ordinance amendment, the zoning is limited to the cannabis overlay zone, and we have a couple maps of that. It's kind of in the northwest corner of the city. And we'll go over that in more detail, where that is exactly. And then as far as land use limits, there would be 10 businesses only, at least that's what we're proposing. We want to hear comments on that. Only certain types of businesses are allowed, and that's really important because at this time, the city's not looking at allowing any dispensaries or delivery or retail sales at this time. They're only looking at cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distributing, and transportation. And distributing is not distributing from a cultivator to an individual person. It's distributing from a cultivator to another licensed entity. So that's a little clarification there. Then another land use limit is that the business operators will have to have a development agreement or conditional use permit first, and also a business regulatory permit, which are... Those requirements are detailed in Title V. The business is limited to one use, so it can only have cultivation only or manufacturing only. So it's one entity, one type, and there's only 10 of those allowed in the proposed regulations. And then there are, of course, other land use restrictions, like density on the parcel, the distance between a cannabis business and a school, odor mitigation, visibility, which means keeping the cannabis product not visible from the public right of way. We would also... The city would also require state licensing and compliance with state law. So the zoning limit, the cannabis overlay zone includes about 354 acres within the area bounded by the railroad tracks on the west, the Adler Canal in the northwest, Van de Graaff Avenue, and Skarone Avenue on the east, and Weekly Street, and Comanche Road on the south. So this includes industrial uses, industrial rail-served zone, and commercial. And this is shown in the maps that we have. Here's another view of the map. It's probably easier to see the blown-up maps, but this is essentially the area. See, I think this is Jasper up here, and then we have Coal right there. So if you have any questions about this actual area, we can direct those to staff at the conclusion of the presentation. So why did staff choose this area? It's highly industrialized. There's quite a few vacant parcels. A lot of the parcels that are developed are blighted or in disrepair, and the city felt that maybe this would be a good area to start working on cleanup and getting revitalized. There are some residential uses in the lower portion that are nonconforming, so we'd have to take those into consideration as well. So like I said, the types of permitted businesses in this zone with all the other land use restrictions would be cultivation, that's actually the growing of the plant, manufacturing, that's taking the plant and processing it into either an oil or some other kind of concentrate, testing. That's where the product is taken, usually just a small sample of the product is taken to a testing lab, and it's checked for different levels of THC or CBD to make sure there's no mold in there, no pesticides at significant levels, and that sort. It's just very similar to any other kind of pharmaceutical testing or product testing. Distribution, that's... Distribution and transportation are both sort of transporting the product. Distribution is in between licensed entities. Transportation is very similar, where you're just sending the product to either a dispensary or another licensed business. And like I said before, the city is not in this ordinance considering dispensaries, delivery, or retailers at this time. It's just a different use, and the city wants to kind of move slowly and assess the uses proposed before getting into these other types of uses where the product is actually sold to an individual. So we have the 10 permitted business limit. The city's looking at authorizing up to 10 commercial cannabis activity applicants to operate within the city. Land use entitlement, first, we would look at development agreements and then move into the use of conditional use permits. So before operating, a business would have to have a CUP or a development and a regulatory permit. So that requirement's in the proposed zoning code, and then the section in Title V has all of the regulations with regard to what is entailed and required for a regulatory So initially, we're looking at a development agreement because we can include... The city can include fiscal mitigation measures, conditions of approval that are similar to what you would see in a conditional use permit, and other terms as approved by the city council. So these are the types of things you would see in a development agreement, a description of the project, how long the entitlement is, other land use regulations, fiscal mitigation measures, requirements that records be available for review by the city, auditing requirements, hours of operation for construction and operation, indemnification of the city, appropriate SEQA review, and conditions of approval from different departments, like similar to what you might see in approving a conditional use permit. Then conditional use permits will be issued after the effective date of an approved ballot measure authorizing taxation. There won't be conditional use permits before that time. Instead, the city would look at using a development agreement in order to obtain fiscal mitigation. The city is looking to get this type of ballot measure on the ballot as soon as possible. If they're not available or able to do it this year, then next year during the general election. And until that time, the city would operate under development agreements. So for a conditional use permit, those requirements... There are general requirements for conditional use permits in Title 17, Article V. That includes the application requirements, planning commission must review, there are certain findings the commission must make, the permit lapses after a year if there's no action. There are also suspension and revocation provisions and violations and penalties. So the city's just looking to use the same regulations that are in the general conditional use permit code section at this time. Tax options. When the city decides to move forward on a taxing plan, that's not something that we're really deciding on tonight, but we wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that there are many different ways that this type of business can be taxed. Some cities put a dollar amount on the square foot footage, the footprint of the building, the canopy space, floor area. Some cities are also taxing based on a percentage of gross wholesale receipts, and then you can also do a combination that includes the floor area tax, you know, $15, for example, per the first 10,000 square foot and then feet, and then maybe reduced amount after that. And then also looking at a percentage of gross wholesale receipts in addition to or separate from that. So then there's a standard that's the floor area tax that's kind of... It stays the same. It's an amount that the city knows that they'll always get from that business, and then the... If it's a tax on wholesale receipts, that's something that would fluctuate based on the market. So the zoning ordinance amendment would limit businesses to one activity. So if someone is or an entity is permitted, they can only operate one type of activity. That would be cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, or transportation, not a combination, and not dispensaries, retail, or deliveries. Up to 10 businesses in the city, and each business is operated by a different entity. There's also density limit, commercial cannabis activity, and that term means cultivation, manufacturing, any one of those types of businesses. She'll be limited to no more than 75% of the acreage of a parcel in the zone, so the rest of the parcel has to have a different type of use on it. The distance requirement. These types of uses would have to be at least 500 feet away from a sensitive receptor, which is defined pretty much as any type of K through 12 school, daycare centers, preschools, parks, playgrounds. Cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, and testing can only occur indoors. There won't be any... There won't be any outdoor cultivation or activities out here, and we think it's a little too warm for that, but... Under the regulatory permit guidelines, there are building standards. Odor control is a big issue. We want to keep the odor indoors and also maintained. We don't want any odors detectable from anywhere off the property boundaries. Don't want it to be a nuisance or cause any type of, or any type of attractive nuisance either. The city does not want cannabis to be visible from the public right-of-way or any unsecured areas, so the buildings will have to, you know, you can't have a lot of windows. It'll mostly be like a warehouse-type building that these would be in. State licenses are required. So these businesses would have to operate in compliance with the state regulations and obtain state licenses. There's also a reimbursement agreement component. So with each application or each business that wants to enter into a development agreement, that business will also have to enter into a reimbursement agreement, and that covers all consultant fees, attorney's fees, and other costs that the city will incur that's related to the project. There will be an upfront deposit for that as well, and it depends on the project that's proposed. And as I mentioned, there is also a regulatory permit requirement. It's not really appropriate to keep all those types of regulations in the zoning code. The zoning code should be limited to land use. So, but the city is interested in having more operating-type requirements, and those would be found in Title V under business licenses. And that's to reduce crime, fire hazards, odors, other impacts to the community. So as I mentioned, I'm going to go over these pretty briefly, the application and other aspects of the regulatory permit. That's not in front of the planning commission tonight for recommendation for approval. We just want to provide this information to the planning commission and the public because it will go before the city council. So as part of the application, the applicant will have to provide a lot of information. We'll go over that about their type of business, their managers, shareholders, that sort of information. Also, extensive financial disclosures, copies of other permits, a security plan, odor control plan, business plan, community relations plan, neighborhood responsibility plan, proof of adequate insurance, a budget, and authorization for live scan so the city can do appropriate background checks. So applicant information, that's just what you would think, name, address, all of that. What type of entity is going to be running this business? Address, phone number for all the interested parties, people that are going to actually operate, shareholders, partners, photo identification. License types, permit types that have been issued by the state or other jurisdictions, whether operations or businesses have been denied permits. The physical address of the proposed project, contact information, other names that the project or applicant has used. Then we're also, the city's also looking to require extensive financial disclosures to make sure that these types of businesses can actually operate and do what they propose to do. So the city would get a list of funds, list of loans, investments, and any gifts that these businesses have received. Copies of all state and locally issued licenses. A complete diagram sight plan of the premises. A security plan that includes the number of security cameras, where they're going to be, how they're going to be manned, an alarm system. A provision to make sure that the cultivation, manufacturing, testing areas, and storage areas are locked at all times. Again, storage is very important. To have a licensed security guard licensed by the California Department of Consumer Affairs, or perhaps more than one security guard, depending on the size. And a chain-link fence or other material around the premises. Typically, the, in other cities that I've worked with, the local police department or sheriff's department has preferred a chain-link or at least a fence that they can see through so they can make sure that they know who's in there and what's going on. So that's why we say chain-link instead of like a block wall. An odor control plan, so that has all kinds of ventilation, so we make sure the odors are a nuisance and can be quite potent. So we don't want those getting into the community and bothering people or attracting people to the businesses. A business plan showing how the business will operate. Community relations plan. That's all about outreach, making sure that there's a person 24 hours, 7 days a week that can be called if there's any problems. Neighborhood responsibility plan. That's looking at any adverse impacts of the business and how that business is going to assist the city in mitigating any of those impacts. Proof of adequate insurance. A budget. An authorization for fingerprinting for the California Department of Justice, Federal Bureau of Investigation, and by the police department. So as I said, we'll be looking at pretty extensive background checks for the applicant and those that are managing the facility. And the business will, of course, have to continue to comply with the plans that it submits during the application process. There will need to be a seed-to-sale or track-and-trace system. It's usually some type of software that the cannabis cultivators or manufacturers use that tracks the particular batches of product so we know where it goes through the supply chain. Records have to be available to the city to review for the past three years on 24 hours' notice from the city. Like I said, retail sales are prohibited. There won't be any retail sales in the city as part of this ordinance, no dispensaries. No cannabis can be consumed on the premises, no alcohol on the premises, and juveniles are also not allowed to be on these business locations. As I mentioned before, there are certain building standards for the entrances, the main lobby area, and the activity area where the actual product is being grown or manufactured or tested. The regulatory permit has to be on display. And the city manager or his or her designee can come in and make inspections unannounced. Full compliance with state law will be required. So like any other permit, there will be specific grounds for denial, a two-year term. There are renewal provisions in the proposed ordinance, also suspension, revocation, and violations and penalties like any other type of permit. So that's the presentation. If there are any questions of staff, we'll take them now. From the commissioners. And my contact information if anyone wants to get ahold of me after the meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, we prepared a pretty comprehensive proposed zoning ordinance and an overlay zone. We have Melanie, Kevin, and Jill and city staff to answer any questions you may have. And of course, this is a public hearing, so if you want to deliberate right now or take public testimony first and then deliberate, it's your prerogative, but this is a public hearing.
We'll take public questions first.
So we'll open the public hearing at 7:15?
Yes. So we'll open up the public hearing at 7:15, just like our council said. And we'll begin with Chris Wong.
Hello. Kind of nervous because I coach your son and I'm going to come here and support marijuana. In no way am I ever going to encourage him to ever consume it, but I think that if he ever does want to consume it at a later age when neither you or me are in control of it, I think that he should have a safe access to it, and he's not like resorting to somebody who is like doing it under, you know, under the cover of dark where there are no regulations or any sort of things to keep people in check, right, or to keep people safe. I think that, I know there are some people who are going to speak against it later, but I think that if we look at marijuana as something like with... If we look at it with fear, it's gonna, it's not gonna turn out well for anybody. I'm wondering who the ordinance is written for. I hope that it's written for Callexico residents. If anything, for that the people that live here can take advantage of the ordinance rather than a big corporate industry coming in and take advantage of our laws. I wouldn't see it fair for somebody with a lot of money to come into town and do what people here have been wanting to do for a long time. And the people here, you know, they're going to stay poor because they can benefit off of, you know, whatever ordinance that we set. That is not to say that I'm not against the big money coming in. It's just, it feels like the regulation is suited for big industry and not for the people, for the ones who would need it, I guess, or want it. I know that people are against it, and for a long time I was against it too, but I think that if you have a regulated market, even if you allow recreational dispensaries in downtown or in Imperial Avenue, I think it could revitalize the town. I think it could create a tourist market that could rival the places in Northern California who are already doing it and benefiting from it. That's not including the people with cancer who... There's proven, not proven, there are peer-reviewed studies that I can send you guys if you'd like, peer-reviewed studies that suggest marijuana inhibits cancer cell growth. It helps, there's tons and tons of testimony that which I'm sure you've already heard of, people with epilepsy seizures who have 300 seizures a day, and it brings them down to like less than 10. And it's little kids who are suffering, right? And this tool helps them. And if we see it as something that's negative, then, you know, it's like a gun, you know, it's the person, the gun isn't the bad thing, it's the person who's shooting the gun. It's like a fork, you know, the person, if you overeat, it's not the fork's fault, it's your fault. If you abuse marijuana, it's maybe it's your fault, not necessarily... It's how you use it and how we approach it. How we approach it is very important because it can cripple people who have had aspirations here for a while, who I think are going to speak after me of going into this because they see it as something that's, you know, not criminal. They don't feel like they are. And they should have a rightful place. Even if you're against it, I don't think it's your right to take away their right to consume it or, you know, use it.
Mr. Wong, your three minutes...
Three minutes are up, okay, sorry, thank you.
Loli Torres.
Loli Torres, 46 Las Flores Drive, Pioneer resident of Callexico. And I am very much against this. It's just not what our town needs. I think the city should go out and seek some other sort of revenue. They have to do their homework. I was surfing through the internet, like they say, and I came up with a report in the New York Times, and it says, "There's this Denver man who, hours after buying a package of marijuana, infused karma candy for one of Colorado's new recreational marijuana shops, began raving about the end of the world, and then pulled a handgun from the family safe and killed his wife," the authorities say. "Some hospital officials say they are treating growing number of children and adults sickened by potent doses of edible marijuana." sheriffs in neighboring states complain about stone drivers streaming out of Colorado and through their towns. So I'm sure that city staff should do their homework and find out this real status as to having this type of industry in town. It's sad to say that in surfing the internet, a name came up of somebody that fought against the drug usage, and that was Kiki Camarena. And I think we really should respect what he fought for and not bring it into his hometown. Like I said, I think you should notify the right people to come before the city council. And you guys postpone your decision for tonight. There wasn't any notices put in the schools, in the churches. Not everybody has computer knowledge, or Facebook, or tweet, or whatever you guys call it. I think it should be publicized and brought to the attention of all the residents of Callexico because that is who's going to be affected. Have the town hall meetings, please. Alex, do it for your town. Thank you.
Jim Spruce.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, committee, for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'll take the lead on there might be some opposition, so I'll talk a little bit about some happenings. Last time I was here, we talked about a federal level, and I was at this podium, and I talked about the Warbacher-Far Act that the president was about to sign in. Good news for the cannabis industry and any medicinal state, which there's now over 29 medicinal states in the union that allow for cannabis to be used, both medicinally and some recreationally. That was signed, President Trump signed that. So the DOJ or any agency underneath is not allowed to come in and prosecute anyone in the cannabis industry in legalized states, which of course California is. Ms. Tremblay, great presentation, thank you. Very, very thorough. It looks like there's a lot of thought and process put into the ordinance. I did not see any kind of a dispensary listed. In fact, it strictly prohibits a dispensary, correct? Right, that's where a person might purchase it and use it. You might not know this, but if you went to, and maybe you want to write this down, weed maps, you could find 19 deliveries that are delivering the product to patients, right? So whether you want to believe it or not, you can purchase. In fact, I could in 20 minutes have my medicine delivered here. I'm a card-carrying person in the community. So I could have it delivered right here, right now, right? So adult responsibility, we could go on and on and on and debate that for hours, but the question is what this community is going to do, right, to regulate it? And regulation means taking it off of a black market, I will have you know, right? Everyone knows that. If you regulate it and you tax it, it's safe, you can test it, right? And you eliminate the black market. Again, we could talk for hours and hours on that. Crime, there's nothing to steal. I saw that facility that was outlined... I saw that facility that was outlined, I mean, I don't know who could get in there, about everything, the details of it, right, that you talked about. So the crime, by the way, there's no cash there either, and product is taken through a seed-to-sale tracking, which will eliminate the black market out to the coast where dispensaries are. Now, in the future, if there's dispensaries, that debate will have to ensue, but for right now, that's not what I'm seeing in the ordinance. So, real quick on, you mentioned, Ms. Tremblay, the trailer bill, and it did talk about the vertical integration. The vertical integration is everything that they're calling activities in this ordinance. Activities go from cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, right? And the way it's reading right now is an operator would be very limited. That trailer bill from the state came through because it is critical, and please understand, I'd be happy to follow up, I got your information, with some notes, it's critical that operators can cultivate, manufacture, and distribute outside of the community, right? That's why the state is taking those measures, to make sure that the operators can properly get the product out, if that makes any sense. So I would just please, I would ask the committee and the commission to please look at that and consider some input as to the activity section of the ordinance. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Anna Corona. You're not going to speak, Anna?
No.
Ben Horton.
Ben Horton, Calexico, lifetime resident of Calexico. I saw the presentation, it was a good presentation. As I sit there, I was thinking on this presentation and the city of Calexico. I want to ask everybody that sits here, are we ready with our law enforcement, our support systems, and everything that we have within the city? We already have a problem with the housing department. Are we ready to administer this project? I saw that the city manager, if he has to do everything that's on this, he's got a lot to do, and I hope he's up to the task. But what I'm trying to say is, we had issues with our police department, and the issues were, some of our policemen were not up to the standards that we should have as a city. Now, we're talking about a program that personally I think should be put out to the city as a whole to vote on it. Once you vote on it, you have a consensus of the city. You have a consensus of the city, so there's no misunderstanding. And I feel that, they say there would be no impact financially on the city, listening to all these regulations, there's going to be impact. And I think if we're going to move forward on this, we should have a plan together. And as it stands right now, ladies and gentlemen, we do not have a plan to move forward. And when you have no plan, you have a plan for disaster, failure. So therefore, think about what we're doing. Our commissioners here, they have a little bit on their hands, but yet I think they're up to the task. Thank you very much.
Maritza Hurtado.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask, is this the one that's working? To ask if I can have the same five minutes at the first speaker head?
What's that?
The first speaker head counted, he had five minutes, so do you mind if I have five?
My timer, I didn't, but you know what, there's precedent, so you can use your five minutes.
All right, thanks a lot. It just makes it really hard when I was prepared for a little more. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here. Actually, I am city council of the city of Calexico, been doing so for the last six years. And I'm highly concerned about this issue, and we're going to talk a little bit of direct stuff as far as what my viewpoint is of what I'm facing here today. First of all, on our commission, we do have our chair, Mr. Peroni. As far as I understand from our city manager, Mr. Peroni's involvement with the groups that have been wanting to bring this project to the city of Calexico was in the initial stages, so I believe there is a conflict of interest here, Mr. Peroni, that I don't believe you should be voting on this item. If you feel the same way as I do, I would like to see you recuse yourself, and if not, at least I know that I've made it known to the public that you did in fact have some involvement together with our mayor, Mr. Mandy Real, early on, and Mr. Vias hiring with the city. So that is first, the conflict housekeeping that I needed to ensure that we understood, and that the fact that, what am I doing here? Actually, I'm doing, I'm here because this issue has not been brought to the council in an appropriate manner, and actually, this is the first opportunity that I have witnessed that the public actually has the formal opportunity to have an involvement. I had an opportunity with Ms. Jill Tremblay last couple of meetings ago that she was here, and I realized that we do have an issue here. We do have a violation of the Brown Act. And the Brown, violation occurred when maybe she wasn't present, but this occurred in our first time that this project idea came to the city of Calexico. And that was approximately October the 12th of 2016. Anybody of you can look that up, there was a presentation, I believe, by Trinity and some other group, there was a, what's her name? A Tammy something also that came, and Tom LaSalle that also came in with another group that day. And well, the agenda item that day for the public was only a presentation. However, your council at that time was Mr. Castro, Mr. Kim, Armando Real, myself, and Mr. Moreno. And the council walked away with directions to start this project up. That was a violation of the Brown Act in my viewpoint. The citizens should have known that that was what was going to be discussed that day, just as I was told when I wanted to make an amendment to the agenda the other day when you were here, just to make a modification to a small change that we had. You did mention to me that it was important that our citizens know what was going to be discussed, and that it was not possible for me to put on the, or make that change here with my council members, just to simply make the change, because we need to make the change on the agenda, because it's so important to tell the citizens what's going on, and what we're here for to talk about, and what we're here for to discuss, so that there's a fair opportunity for the citizens to come here and have the fair opportunity to have their opinion. We are not starting up a cupcake shop. Cupcakes, everybody likes cupcakes. Anybody who doesn't like cupcakes, that's great, that's kind of sad, actually, but not everybody likes this issue. So what did we get here? How did we get here? Okay? We got here with somebody jumping some hoops. Why? As I told you, there is some political involvement here with this issue, which should make you uncomfortable. There was a moratorium that you, Mr. Vias, I believe, also experienced in your first time you worked here for the city. That moratorium was lifted by the city somewhere around early 2016, I can't even remember. El Centro kept theirs, as a matter of fact, I talked to them right before I came over here. I have many individuals in the other cities that I speak to, and I go through our trials and tribulations within this city, and the manner in which we conduct ourselves and how we conduct business. And I asked them if they themselves are interested then in starting this type of project. And there's, I mean, why are we so innovative? Why are we the ones to be the first? And they said, "No way, Maritza, we ain't going to touch that. We're going to let you guys be the corrupt ones for the first time." Wow, I don't appreciate hearing that. I don't operate like that, and that's what I've been fighting for quite some time. So, you know, but the fact that we have violated the Brown Act, I believe that I'm going to ask our city manager and our city attorney to please show the citizens how. On October the 12th, when this item was pushed through this city, and corners were cut, and everyone was bamboozled with an issue that no one had the opportunity to fight fairly, how was that not a violation of the Brown Act when you did not inform the citizens that day that they should have had the opportunity to come here and discuss that? But none of you guys did. This is all being pushed through politically, and I don't appreciate that, especially having gone through what we already decided that was just the most difficult time for the city with FBI, DOJ. And as a matter of fact, DOJ just gave their DOJ report, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, that was issued out last year, May, I think, 16th of 2016, where they're just telling us how horrible our department is. And you guys aren't reading that and realizing that we're not ready for this, just like they're telling you, I'm giving you a little more details why we're not ready for this. The other thing here is that potentially, these property sales, they involve properties, and I look like, when we look at this map here, I think it's about 50%. More than 50% of those properties are something called the Town Center. Didn't we get federal funds for that to save that property or get it lifted up? Now we're going to bring in a state-type regulated program that works, or rather clashes with federal law, but yet we want to place it on property that was federally funded. Is that a conflict? Because I understand from the city of El Centro that they don't go towards this-
Maritza Hurtado, your five minutes are up.
Because they're conflicting, conflicting.
No, when there's, we're following, yeah, five minutes are up.
I just want you guys all to know, if you can't believe this, please go back and look at your meeting videos, we're doing that today. I'm fed up with this situation. I think that we need to go back and stop this for a moment and give the citizens a fair chance. Give them a fair chance, because all you guys are already really advanced in your process. We've got all these expenses going on, but yet this is the first time that the citizens be given opportunity.
Thank you, Maritza. Francisco Andrade.
Okay, my name is Francisco Andrade, I created and founded Imperial County Hemp Cannabis Coalition, it's in favor of hemp and cannabis, but in a medical way, because it's all about treating, healing our county and community and everything so forth. And what I just heard in all this stuff, I think we should just start over and start just growing in our own personal stuff. We all have our own opinion and so forth, and just, I'm just in favor for the small businesses. I'm a craft grower, I learned how to grow cannabis, hemp, any type of plant, flower, anything. And we're trying to use veganics, and it's all medical, and if we get this opportunity to grow in small batches, we get solar panels, wind turbines, and use green energy besides going commercial and using up the grid and so forth. And there's more to say, I'll keep it short, but I just can't believe it, and it's all about treating, I can't say, I just can't believe it, thank you.
Gary Matelski.
Hello, Gary Matelski, Imperial, California. Just a couple of quick comments. On the application process, it showed where people who had a felony conviction could put it on the record and proceed. I think a felony conviction should be a disqualification, so if you decide to go ahead with this project, I would hope all applicants who have felony convictions will be disqualified. As a felon, you lose rights, you can't have a gun, and you shouldn't be in this business. Couple other points I'd like to make, where the limits of this is going to be 10 if it goes through, with only one license per applicant, this may lead you to getting 10 commercial grows. What you would probably want is a good mix of a laboratory, not a dispensary, but a testing facility, and these would be an add-on license to somebody who's already got to grow. So I think you should consider letting the applicant have two licenses, as long as they're not the same license. Also, there's like six methods on how to tax this, but even in the analysis and discussion, it says the industry is constantly changing and there is a degree of uncertainty. If the city goes ahead with these type of businesses, they should basically not put in a restrictive tax structure where in five, seven years, basically, the businesses will be out of business. It's like an incubation hub, a pharma park, kind of help, if you decide to go that way, help the businesses get started and running, and at such time as they're successful, then you could look for a more aggressive tax. But to have taxes codified right off the bat, you may be hamstringing yourself, and some of these businesses may not be able to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ruley.
Thank you. My name is David Rule, I'm an attorney, and I represent people all over the state in the permitting process, so I have a lot of familiarity with the legislation in small towns going through this. I've sat through the Humboldt Planning Commissioners and so forth. I commend the commission for taking on this difficult decision and process. I was entertained by seeing the word "left behind" because that is happening with a lot of communities, and at least addressing it and making the decision to move forward or not is appropriate, and therefore, your community will know where it stands. I'm not here to comment on whether it should be illegal or the medicinal benefits, I just want to provide you feedback on my review of your proposed ordinances and ideas, and the gentleman before me raised some good points, and I just want to be brief. The city attorney mentioned one per, one license or activity per applicant, cultivation or manufacturing or extraction. If it's limited to 10, I believe that wouldn't be enough. If you said 10 per the proposed drawn-out area, that might fit, but for the entire city, I think that might not be enough. I think that it's a great idea to grow and identify your location and grow into it with the security in the area. So I've reviewed that property extensively, it's a good spot, part of your, good location in your community. So the 10, their license is proposed to be non-transferable, I would consider looking into something like transferability, like an ABC license, where the new applicant or transferee would be, have to go through the same process. The taxation, I would lump some of the applicant fees in the first year before you implement some canopy tax. Canopy tax is probably, in my opinion, the most appropriate, so you can choose to tax them whether they're operating or not, because if I have a floor space and I'm taxed, and I'm not growing, or I have a bad batch, let's call it a bad batch, it's going to put me out of business if I'm overtaxed, so, but that's down the road. And I did have a question, would it be limited per parcel, or would it be limited per project? So if I own three parcels, because some are smaller than bigger, I think the commission would consider taking that into per project rather than per identified EIN or parcel. As far as odor, you live in a farming community, and I think the odor of marijuana is far less than anything else. The odor permeates typically from the harvest and not necessarily as much during the grow, so you might say, "Let's regulate during the drying process." I would encourage considering outdoor, as long as it wasn't a nuisance and you had public forum. If you want to reduce the draw on the resources of electricity, outdoor's so much cheaper and without the power draw. If you're going to limit it indoor, consider allowing or identifying indoor as a greenhouse, you know, a secured structure that's not public view, so that's going to take some more consideration, what is a greenhouse? So these are just some various ideas, they're the little things that kind of I've been looking through, but if, but it's a great start, and I commend the, and, oh, most cities have started with the dispensing side, you're starting from the where does it come from side, and that's probably the appropriate place to start, so-
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Armando Real. Oh, that's- Okay, we have Jorge Colio. Jorge Colio? Oh, you're not going to speak, okay. Are you for it or against it?
I'm for it.
Okay. Lisa Rivera. And before anybody says I have a conflict of interest, she is my niece.
Good evening, commissioners and city manager, city attorney. I just have a couple of questions. So, staff and public, city manager, also, I want to commend that I worked in this field, and I think they did a wonderful presentation, and it is very detailed. I'm not for it, but they have done their homework, and I think it's really awesome that, even if I'm not for it, the way they're doing it is covering all bases, I'd say. So some of my questions are, do you have numbers for your revenue projections, as in, is this going to create jobs here, what kind of patients have accrued, your CP, how much are you going to charge, what are the projections for revenues? Do you have any of that yet? Also, just a question, so, is there plans for whatever money that is generated, what it'll be used to fund, as in more jobs, city improvement, what are you planning to use the money for? What are you planning to use the money for? Now, will there be a name change within this overly district as zoning? Because to me, it's a little confusing when you, in your ordinance, say it's going to be an industrial, and that's going to be, can you outline it specifically? But I would like to see a zoning change, let's say, call it MJ, something like that, for marijuana use. I think that would clarify it a lot, because then I see over here that, I just don't want it to be easy if it is passed, for later on, other industrial zones to use for this that are closer to homes. And I know, I see that, I remember in your presentation, so far, within houses, schools, I'd like to see a name change in the zoning within that overly district. Commissioners, have you done your research on other states, as in crime rates, accident rates? Have you looked at any of that? Specifically, Colorado would be a good state to start.
Niece, I have.
Okay.
And it created 18,000 new jobs for the year 2016, $2.4 million of new revenue just for the year 2016, plus it created new jobs for local businesses, people that do mechanical air, plumbing, electricians. It created jobs for people in the hospitality industry, people that own land, people that own warehouses. It goes on and on and on. So if something, if you generated $2.4 billion in 2016.
Okay. Can you clarify for me, or kind of give us an idea, citizens, especially those opposed to it? Now, when businesses come to our city, there's this thing called conditions of approval. With these conditions of approval, the city can ask these developers that are coming, or these business people, to make our city look nice. Will this help our city look nicer? Will you put those kinds of, or those, ask for those things in your conditions of approval, as in lighting sidewalks? Can you inform us if that's going to help our city? Yes?
You know, I would like to say a lot of things, but really, it's not up to the planning. If you know the focus of planning, and I want the whole audience to know, it's not up to us for them to do this, that. Our focus is zoning and planning.
Will planning just implement conditions of approval?
We're going about the zoning and that part. See, they're presenting to us where the zoning, where they want to have it. So that's what we're looking at, that's what's brought in front of us today. Now, all you're, what you're asking, it's more of a city council.
No, no, no. What I'm asking is, will you clarify to the public that even though there's a lot of opposition for it, I'm opposed to it, that it can be a good thing for the city? That it will change the way the city looks, as in, they'll put in new sidewalks, they'll develop areas that aren't developed? Can you help us understand that? I don't think, I don't want people throwing their high, but the thing is, they're not going to have the sensors here. They're growing it, cleaning it, sending it out. But can you help us understand? Because a lot of us don't understand that.
And I believe it will be, it will be. So my little niece, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Okay. We don't, we have the mayor?
Armando Real, City of Calexico. First of all, thanks, I want to thank everybody, the board, city manager, staff, attorney, everybody for being here. I want to echo something that Alex Peroni, the chairman, just said, is that, is that this meeting is to talk about the zoning ordinance and things that are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. As far as approving this ordinance, the city council has passed it four to one, and the previous city council passed it three to two. So the city council has already approved this. It is not a matter coming to this board to see if it's going to be approved or not, because that has been done at a city council level. Here, it's more within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. But seeing how, and the city council has done the right, public forums, we've had a public forum before, was it one or two? We have two, right? We had two public forums for the community to come and speak. This is not the first time the people have been, you know, you guys see it on the newspaper, people have come in before. But it's really sad to, I want to say, it's really sad to see a city council person come up here and say that, that things weren't done the right way, because they have. And people have come to several meetings and talked to us, and this is how this kind of got formed. As far as me working on this, yes, I have worked on it myself, as the mayor, as a city council member. And it's very sad that this councilwoman says that nobody reached out, because I think there's several companies that are trying to do something in Calexico here, and you can ask them. They have reached out to her. Has she called you guys back? Never. She would never, she would never answer anybody or talk to anybody regarding cannabis. You know what? It's not, I don't think it's whether I'm for or against cannabis, is that who am I to take away that right to somebody who needs it as a patient? Or to somebody who needs it for whatever reason? Recreationalists, since Prop 64, the whole state, 29 states in the whole United States are saying they're for it. People, it's here to stay. It's not going anywhere, I guarantee you. One thing I will say, as the mayor of Calexico, for years upon years, things have passed Calexico. The mall in El Centro wanted to be in Calexico. What happened? It left. Stores want to be in, Costco wanted to be in Calexico, Target wanted to be in Calexico. Everything wanted to be in Calexico, and somehow, we're always left, we're always left behind. We just look and say, oh, man, we could have had that. As the mayor, I tell you that we are being progressive. This is here to stay, and no more are we going to be last in line. We're doing this first, and we're showing the whole county and the other cities, this is how it's done in Calexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Collazo?
Ralph Collazo. Born and raised here in the valley. Ran a business out of here, out of the swap meet, me and my father, farm labor contractors. Now I'm an advocate for a group of patients here in the Imperial County. And between me and you guys, I can, God honestly tell you that here in Calexico, you have the biggest population of medical marijuana patients in the county. I hear all this talk about money, this, that, this, that. What about the patients? What about the people that need it? Have you guys ever been in a room with a cancer patient, or a diabetes patient, or somebody with AIDS that's dying? Have you ever seen what cannabis could do for them? You guys can shake your head up, down, or no, side to side. I'm pretty sure you guys haven't. And to see all this being talked about, and the patients here in the Calexico, not being represented right, and not being advocated for, because you guys have patients here in the city of Calexico, whether you like it or not, that need to be taken care of, that need their medicine, that need Rick Simpson-type oil, that do not have access to it. They have to go outside the county, they have to get other resources to get it. That shouldn't be the case. As an American citizen, you should be able to use medical marijuana, and you should not be restricted from it. What you guys are implementing here, or trying to set up, it seems it's discriminatory towards the patients of the city of Calexico. And I don't think it's right. And I'm here to tell you guys that it isn't right. It needs to be addressed, it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be, you guys need to figure something out, because this is not right for the city of Calexico, for the patients of Calexico. I don't know about money, funding, whatever you guys might be doing with the Trinity Farms or whatever, but that's outside of the county. That's not going to benefit the patients here in the county. And you guys are also talking about money with Colorado. Colorado makes money off of it, because they grow it and dispense it within their cities and in their counties. They don't send it out, they don't send it likewise. As a matter of fact, they come and get weed from here in California, most of those guys. So, I mean, let's get real here. And I'm going to tell you like this, you guys have the biggest population of medical marijuana patients in the county, here in the city of Calexico, whether you like it or not. And they need to be taken care of, because they're dealing with cancer, AIDS, diabetes. Have you ever been on a kidney machine? You ever had your blood sucked out of your body? That's what's going on with my father right now, a prominent man here in the valley. And he's dying, and I'm watching him every day die. And he doesn't have access to certain things, because there's restrictions here in the valley. This thing needs to be addressed for the patients of the city of Calexico and the patients of the valley. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera? This will be the last one we take to close public comments.
Hello. My name is Magdalena Rivera, and this is my third time being in a meeting here, and I hope it's not going to be my last time. So what I gather here is, these people want to make money, saving some people, but, and we want money to make Calexico great, so that people from outside come and say, I want to live in Calexico. That's what I want, because I lived in Calexico. I wasn't born in Calexico, like most of you, that Maritza, Peronis, I don't know you guys well, pero, I don't know you at all, the rest of you. But the people that work here, and they're asked for our votes, supposedly want to make Calexico grow. You guys need money? All these things for money for the city? I hope you're thinking for Calexico, and like Maritza said, I don't know what's happening. I just see all of you fighting amongst all of you. Everybody wants a piece. I don't know how good Wascarillo, Moreno, and all the ones that have sit right there, always fighting position, and entran como amigos, they come in as friends, and then they live as enemies. But you don't care, it's just showing you don't care about Calexico, nor leaving a good example for kids to want to be sitting there. And if they do, I don't know about Mantis, I know him since he's a little boy, but I hear only bad stuff. I like him, I love him, but still, I don't know what he's doing. I just hope everything comes good. Que venga, all this is, it looks so good, but it's too near. It's too near, and the policemen, we don't even have any when we call them, but they're going to be patrolling over there too. So I hope you guys do a good job, that everybody, you guys enjoy your job and each other. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. So we'll be closing this part of public comments, and now we'll open it up to the commissioner comments. And I'll start with you, Mr. Cardenas.
Mrs. Salazar?
Well, I want to thank everybody for showing up for our meetings tonight. It's very important, and I think it's going to be a historic type of meeting that I guess everybody's been waiting for to happen. And I know we're probably not going to make a lot of people happy, and it's like anything, we can't please everybody. But I do feel that we do need it in the city. I feel that there's a lot of need for it. There's a lot of patients that you're, we don't want to recognize, we don't see them, we don't want to hear them, we just want to see what we want. But I feel that we should try to understand everybody's needs and consider everybody's options, and not be afraid to speak up. And so I'm thinking that we should move forward and try to keep going strong with this.
Is that all your comments?
That's all my comments.
Mr. Cesar Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Rivia. Ms. Rivia, how is the tax structure? Explain to me how the tax rule is going to be generated, exactly.
Okay, so if you give me a moment, let me get to the page where we talk about the different types. I think what we offered the commission is an opportunity to look at a manual of options. We don't have it finalized yet, but there's a way, there's different ways to be able to get to a revenue generation component. So on page five of your staff report, we offer six different ways that through the development agreement process, which is yet to be determined on a case-by-case basis, we can actually develop a revenue generation method. What do we call it? A fiscal mitigation plan? To be able to, you know, touch on those, all those things like extra policing and mitigating the impacts to the city, and then be able to develop a revenue, a revenue stream for the city. We do have something that's called a per-square-foot canopy tax, which is a $15 per square foot of canopy space that could grow over time. We do have another menu option that would be a per-square-foot floor area for the entire facility, and, you know, the next two are derivatives of that type of scheme. And the last three could be a percentage of the grocery receipts that's generated from the sales of the product. And so, you know, at this point, what we're proposing to do is that this is basically a zoning ordinance that would allow us the ability to enter into development agreement in the future, so that we can assess each project individually and come up with a fiscal mitigation plan, which would be the, where we would generate revenues to the city and revenues to be able to mitigate all the impacts that that use will create.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. It does. We don't have a plan yet, but we have choices.
We have choices, yes.
And we'll get to them when we get to them.
Sure.
I understand that. The, how would you determine who gets the license exactly? What's the criteria? You got 10 applicants that you can accept at one time? How would you determine that?
So what we're proposing to do, in order for us to keep the industry control, so to speak, is we're proposing, the commission and the council, that we are allowed to process up to 10 permits to operate, right? It could be for cultivation, for manufacturing, for distribution, up to 10 only, to see how the industry behaves. I think, I think for the most part, everybody understands, this is a new industry, right? But it's legal now in California. And we would like to be able to enter or go into the possibility of regulating it in our city. So we want to start with 10, right? And this is what we're proposing, 10 permits to see, to see as we evolve, as the state evolves into this permitting structure, to see how this behaves. And ultimately, you know, maybe if successful and we're able to get a hold and mitigate the impacts that this creates, we don't know yet, then we can allow more. So what we would do is, is we would actually entertain an application process that we would, we would consider up to 10 applications, and it would go into a process where we analyze each application on its own merits. Each application would be required to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city, so that we can pay for all the staff time, the attorneys, the, everything that we would need to be able to assess that application on its own merit. And of course, there would be a very extensive list of requirements to make sure that the applicant for that proposed use is a legitimate applicant. Financial plans, financial stability, records, background checks, so that at the end of the day, we are looking at a very legitimate, very real proponent of a license. And we will go through that process on a case-by-case basis.
So we would definitely perhaps hire more code enforcement, due to this pass, correct?
So ultimately, after we review an application and we actually permit, if the council approves the ordinance, we would go into what is called the fiscal mitigation component, which will allow us to determine what would be the workforce to be able to mitigate the impacts of that, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's code enforcement. And so we would able, we would be able to, you know, exact an equal amount for us to be able to cover for those costs associated. costs associated with mitigation and enforcement.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Any more comments from commissioners? I'll give my comments first, and this is not the first time I've said it, I agree with Loli Mercado in regards to the outreach. The outreach to me, and I've told the consultants, you guys did a poor job. You know, I would have liked to see the social media because we have a lot of youth. Most of the people that came here today are either people that are going to grow it or in, in the business that, you know, you guys tell each other. And on the other side, Loli Mercado outreach on, on Facebook. And you know, there was a, a good following today. So I, I believe we should have done a better job in our outreach because I would have liked to see more youth here today, more of our community, because that's what I have not seen here today. So maybe in our next meeting, because after this goes to council, you know, it would be great to see more of our community go out there. And Mr. Consultants, you know, try to, we have our page, we have very knowledgeable people here, where maybe you can connect. There's a place, there's a website called Micalexico, you know, talk to him, say, can we advertise our next meeting here, our next coping meeting? I, I believe he has close to 30,000 followers, so that's probably the whole size of Calexico. So that's one thing I made a comment on. Also, Loli talked about Kiki Camarena, and he was a DEA agent that lost his life in the battle with the drug wars. But I can tell you this, you know, if this passes, it takes the drugs away from those cartels. It takes away from the black market. So we won't see those killings. We won't see those bullies out there killing families, extorting families, and whatever is considered in their, their organized crime. So taking it away and giving it to the government, I think, will have control of it and there won't be, organized crime won't be on top of it, will put a big dent to their pocket. The other issue is, and you know this I'll do when I go to a city council meeting, I'm very concerned and I voice my opinions, our policing is next to nothing. And if this comes to town, we need to be prepared and what we're doing, you know, what strategies do we have? And what our networking is with the sheriff's department, with border patrol, just in case something gets out of hand. And one other comment I'd like to make, I was not in favor of the marijuana grows. And there is a person here in the audience that I met at the very beginning, and they know that I wasn't. Like my nieces, my whole family were in the same consensus. But this has been, you know, I believe in a democracy. People have voted, they want it. So we, we need to get what the people want, they voted, and that's the United States. And it's, now if we pass it here at our local level, we keep our control here. Now, if the state, if we don't do it in these next couple of months, the state's going to come in where we have no control. At least if we do it here locally, our municipality, we have some control, we have some more input. Like my niece was saying, hey, what do we get? I would like to see a lot of nice stuff in town. We haven't, our, our entrance into Calexico is ugly. You know, beautify our town with monies that are coming in. And I think with all this income that people talk about, you know, we'll have income that we can help beautify our town, help education. Because this is something that we haven't thought about. Education, what education? Well, tell your kid not to smoke pot. You know, tell people, hey, this is, it's not good for you. I, I support them in this little part, but you know, let's not sell dime bags out in the street and that kind of stuff. I, I would like to see some education where they can educate our children not to get involved in pot smoking, because I do believe it's, it's a step. So, and I guess that's all I would like to say and what I would like to...
May I, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
You, you mentioned that if this ordinance gets passed, it goes back to the council? Because Mr. Rivia mentioned that he already passed it.
Yeah, I, I think it's point of clarification. I think what the council, you remember back, back last year, the, when, when a presentation was made, the council gave direction for us to go back and analyze the, the part of the ordinance that prohibited cannabis use in the city. So we changed that. So the council pretty much already, already changed that part of the ordinance that, pretty much lifted the prohibition. But, but that ordinance directed us to come back and develop a zoning ordinance. And that's what you're, what you're looking at right now. It's, it's the, the actual zoning ordinance. When, when it goes to council, it, it would go with a different rendition of the ordinance that was approved because by virtue of allowing us a certain ordinance, we also have to develop regulations. So we're, we're taking two, two ordinances to the council if you, when, when it goes to council.
And at that point, there's an opportunity to oppose it? When it goes to council?
Sure. It, it'll be another public hearing where, where the public will be invited to, to have input into the process and to include, you know, whatever, whatever it is important to the community.
Well, what I'm trying to get to is that for, for those that feel that there was not much communication, that's your opportunity to oppose it. So you will have an opportunity. Like, just like today, most of them were in favor. So it's, it's a democracy. Thank you.
And, and so, so your, your action today, if you choose to, would be a recommendation to the city council?
Thank you.
Jill, I have a question for you. Council member Hurtado made a statement where I have a conflict of interest. Because I, I'll tell you what happened. I introduced her one day, I wanted to introduce her one day, Tammy Thomas, who gave a presentation to the city council. And I, I could not make that presentation to her because Maritza was very adamant against it. And you know, she's a bully, she pushed me, and she pushed me right in front of the police chief. So I want to make that very clear. You know, she's, she bullies people and it's not the first time she's done it. So, because I presented her to a person that has no longer come to Calexico because she got scared of her. And she has no application. She's, she does a lot of work for cancer patients. And my father died of cancer. So that's why I decided to help her. And she does a lot of work for the Cancer Research Center of the Desert. And that was my only connection.
Thank you for the clarification.
Do I have a conflict?
I don't see any conflict for you voting on this ordinance.
Okay. So do we, the action we take is, do we vote on it now or? Yes?
If you, if you're done with your deliberations, you can call for the question.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to pass zone ordinance UA 2017-02.
All second now?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes unanimously.
I know, I just want to... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to, I just want to say that I totally spazzed that when I was here about two things some people said. And I want to make, I want to make it clear that this, this ordinance and everything that the city of Calexico is doing is open to every company that wants to come in and do work in the city of Calexico. A lot, so I think somebody came up here and said only for the big companies and it's for, it's for any company that wants to come in and do it. I will tell you that I have toured three facilities, three different facilities. I can tell you that it doesn't look like it's a cheap, a cheap business to get into. But, but nonetheless, I'm sure the city manager and staff are willing to work with anybody. Another thing that's also very important that wasn't up here, and I'm going to try and work on it on my end, as far as the taxing goes, I think it's extremely important that we take those taxes and use them wisely. Some for public safety, obviously, because that needs to be, that's going to be very important, which we know our public safety is in big need of revenue. So whatever money we get in, that we make sure that the council finds a way to make sure that that's earmarked specifically for police, fire, and everything that's going to be affected in the city. So I think it's a win-win for, for everybody and I want to thank you guys, so.
What about the city of Eber? Can you guys go to the city of Eber a minute?
The city of Eber is a county. Yeah, they're, they're county. No, no, they're, they're county. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go on to... Why are you guys leaving? What happened? This is the first time we have this place packed. Now you, you guys can leave, it's all right.
We still have more stuff here.
We do?
We do have a few more items.
A couple more comments, Mr. Chairman? The meeting's not over. The meeting's not over. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple more items on the agenda, staff comments, planning commissioner comments, and then you motion to adjourn.
So we have planning...
I have some comments that I think if, we have, we have an opportunity to perhaps take Ms. Rivera's suggestions that when it goes to council, perhaps maybe we can have conditions of approving the city. You know, I don't know what kind of developments are coming, if they, they can afford it or not, but it's just a suggestion to, to, to take to the council. If it's not too late, because it could be.
Well, yeah, we, we were, I just commented to the city attorney, you know, we could actually, through the development agreement process, we could actually develop an item of list that, that, that we can, we can...
Suggest?
Suggest. One of them is, is public education outreach.
Yes.
You know, and, and you know, a fund that would be able to allow us to educate kids about, you know, the good and the bad of it, so.
Yeah, that's all. That's my suggestion or my comment.
Just sort of anything you can. Mary?
Oh, just a couple, Mr. Rivia, are we following pretty much the process, just like La Quinta Desert, that area that's already started with this program, when they started with the Beticino? Are we pretty much following their lead? So really kind of taking their lead in terms of how we're handling our end of in Calexico?
I feel we've actually gotten all the good from all the ordinances, right? And we actually came up with our latest version, which is probably an improved version of all of them.
Okay.
We, we, you know, a lot of them were approved several years ago, so, so we're compiling and we're cross-referencing and actually, we're actually developing an ordinance that's cutting edge, I think.
So we've pretty much been doing everything correctly, appropriately, everything, pretty much?
I, I would say so, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
My, my last comment, and we'll adjourn after this, is when I was on city council, the casinos wanted to come to town. I was the only council member that was against the casinos because I did my homework. I studied the impacts, the negative impacts that they create in cities, the vice they bring and all the troubles that come with it. So, you know, my niece brought something interesting. Did, did we ask any cities, hey, what are you, what are you going through? What were your growing pains as you started? You know, what did you guys do in your police department? If, you know, crime does get bigger, i- is there a problem in crime? So that, that would be something that I would direct to you, Armando, you're a city manager and, you know, the buck stops there. And I, I'd like to see, maybe you could get together with your police chief.
Keep in mind that this, the, the, the way this ordinance is being proposed is only for cultivation for external, not, not, not to allow it, not to allow dispensaries in town, not to allow retailers in town, but to actually cultivate it for export. So, you know, the, the other component of it is, keep in mind that in California, it is now legal to, to cannabis for recreational purposes as well as medical, it's legal. So, so that is a much bigger question that, that's...
But that's not only crime related to it, because, yeah, keep in mind, there's still cartels. And when you're taking a big chunk of their business, they're going to want to probably in some way retaliate or something like it. So we, we need to be prepared for stuff like that, you know, so that's some of the concerns.
When, when you say it goes out, do you have a mile limit or what do you mean by out?
It's, it's outside of the city limits.
Oh, it could go to El Centro?
Well, it could go anywhere.
In the future, okay.
It could go anywhere where they allow dispensaries.
Out of the city, out of the city.
Right.
Okay, that's what I, I forgot to ask that question.
See, these are all questions that could have been answered.
I know, I forgot.
Okay.
Keep in mind, these are, these are public comments.
You've got an ordinance checkpoint right there that's going to take your product away. How are you going to do that?
No, it'll be legal. Okay, it's 8:20 and we're going to adjourn this meeting, okay?
Yes.